Good evening. It's 6:30 PM on Monday, May the 18th. And I now call the Winton Woods City School Board of Education meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag. The United States of America.
And to the republic- For which it stands. One nation- Under God- Indivisible- With liberty-
And justice-
For all. Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Birdy?
Present.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Present.
Mr. McGowan?
Present.
Mrs. Rugless?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Present. Again, as you can see, tonight's meeting is being conducted via Zoom online meeting platform. And the Waycross community meeting is onsite with Superintendent Smith. There won't be a need for Agenda Item 2.0, which is a recess. Again, it is our intent, as we move through this meeting, to be as productive as possible. So, we will forego any public comments at this time, which is Agenda Item 3.0. And we will call your attention to Policy Number 0169.01, regarding the public participation in board meetings. Having said that, now we'll move on to Agenda Item 4.01, which is comments from the Winton Woods Teachers Association, the WWTA. Do we have a representative from the WWTA on the line at this time?
WWTA does not have any comments at this time.
Alright, thank you so much for your presence at our meeting tonight. The next item on the agenda is 4.02, which is the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, OC. Do we have a representative from OC who is on the line at this time?
Yes, Madam President, we do. This is Shonda Ferguson, President of OC. OC would just like to say thank you for acknowledging us and allowing us to attend the meeting virtual today.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferguson. Welcome to our meeting. We appreciate you taking time out of your schedule to join us tonight. The next item on the agenda is 5.01, which is the approval of minutes as presented. Board, unless you see something that needs to be changed, I will entertain a motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is 6.01, our Treasurer's Report of the Financial Statements for April 2020. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, you have the statements before you. The month of April, we had year-to-date revenues in the general fund of 47 million. We had month-to-date revenues of 4 million, which was basically our final real estate settlement and our rollback from the state of Ohio. The current general fund expenditures are at 43.3 million, and we are currently operating approximately 6% under budget. Our total funds had a total fund balance of 63.7 million. 21 million was the general fund, 5.8 million in building fund, and 30.8 million in the classroom facilities were the major funds for those balance. Unless you have any questions, that's the summary of the financials.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, we'll let the financial statements for the month of April 2020 be submitted for audit. The next item on the agenda is 6.02. Under the Treasurer's Report is the resolution declaring the necessity of levying an additional tax for current operating expenses. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
I first believe it's investments. If I could go ahead and do the investment report.
Did the agenda change?
No, 7.01 is invested.
Oh, you want to skip to 7.01? 6.02 is next.
There is no 6.02 on mine.
It was sent as a separate email. It was added on.
Okay, we can go ahead and do the resolution first. I think we have different orders. I don't know.
Oh, that's gonna cause a problem.
What you have before you is the resolution to put the 6.95 mil levy back on the ballot for the November election. We, as you know, we were unsuccessful with the March election, and the board always wanted to do these resolutions at public meetings. And in order to meet the deadline, we would need to pass the first resolution in the month of May, and then you will then submit this resolution to the county auditor. And then, as you know, he resubmits back to us the cost to the homeowners, and then we pass the resolution to proceed. But this is a resolution of necessity, and we are again recommending the same knowledge as the last unfortunately unsuccessful levy. And it is for a continuing period of time. Again, once again.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour. I'm trying to get this order. I just pulled up the other agenda, and I see there is a different order. But Board, if we could go ahead and take a look at this and make a motion on the Treasurer's Report declaring the necessity of levying additional tax for the current operating expense?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution declaring the necessity of levying an additional tax for the current operating expenses in excess of the 10 mil limitation, requesting the county auditor certify matters in connection with-
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Now, I think I've got my numbers here correctly. Let's go back to where you were at. Mr. Seymour, 7.01, which is the Treasurer's Recommendation for Investments for April 2020.
Okay.
I apologize. I had a different agenda.
That's okay. We had total investment balance at the end of April of 63.8 million. Interest earned for the month of April was 88,364. 31,139 of that was for the general fund, and 57,225 was for the building. And that's the summary of the investment report.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
Dr. Cupaletti?
Yes, that's what I had. Mr. McGowan and Dr. Cupaletti.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 7.03. We went a little out of order. So, it's 7.03, which is under the Treasurer's Report for the five-year forecast for May 2020. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, it's a really difficult five-year forecast to present to you. As you know, it is due to the Ohio Department of Education by the end of May. So, this is our only board meeting in which to revise our five-year forecast. So, in the five-year forecast, I have included the reduction of 551,000 for this year, an anticipated reduction of two times that for next year, which is being recommended at a lot of the seminars I've been attending. And then, also, they're not sure of the continuation of the Governor's Student Success and Wellness Funds. So, with the knowledge given right now, those funds have been removed from the five-year forecast also. So, what that means is that those positions that were being funded, or those expenditures being funded out of student wellness and success, would have to come back into the general fund for next year. And then, of course, all current negotiated contracts are included, and also, the 5.6.95 mil levy is also included. That's basically a summary of the changes to the five-year forecast as you last adopted it. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Could we entertain a motion first, Board, and then we could ask any questions that we might have?
I'll make a motion to approve the five-year forecast for fiscal years 2020 through 2025 as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Now, if there are any questions or discussion for Mr. Seymour at this time, we could ask those at this time?
Hey, Randy?
Oh.
Yes.
I'm sorry, does the, I know in the five-year forecast, you've got an estimate of delinquent taxes, or, you know, due to what's going on. Do you, how comfortable are you with that, and are you getting any feedback from the county auditor as to what you think that's gonna be?
No, right now, the only thing is that the county treasurer delayed payment, but it would still be within the fiscal year. And we estimate, and I kind of looked at delinquencies back when we were in the last recessionary period, back in the '09 and '08 for the districts, and they didn't change substantially. So, I looked at the delinquencies over the last few years, and I tried to pick the one that best represented what we might be faced with, not knowing for sure what we will be faced with, and saying that the delinquencies would go up.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Rugless, you had a question for him?
Actually, it was similar to what Mr. Birdy said. And I know that, you know, we're right in flux right now. So, we have to wait to see what's happening at the state. There's a lot of changes that's coming. So, that have happened, and that's still coming.
Okay. Thank you. If there are no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. The next item on our agenda is 8.01, which is under the reports of the superintendent, and it is our first reads of new and revised board policies. There are, there is one new policy, and I believe six revised policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President. As Dr. Johnson mentioned, there is a new policy, which is 4124 for classified staff, and it's an employment contract. This policy is as new as the last modified date, actually is April 21st, so it is actually brand-new. So, please keep a close eye on that one. The other ones are revisions. Policy 1520, employment of administrators. Policy 2464, gifted education and identification. Revised policy 3120, employment of professional staff. Policy 4120, classified staff, employment of classified staff. Policy 4162, classified staff, drug and alcohol testing of CDL license holders and other employees who perform safety-sensitive functions. And finally, policy 6107, finances. Authorization to accept and distribute electronic records and to use electronic signatures. So, that one is policy 6107. Board, we, please be prepared to vote on these policies at the next meeting in June.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. As he said, these policies are first reads, and they're for information at this point. Well, we will vote on them at the next regular board meeting. The next item on the agenda is 8.02, which is facilities update. Mr. Smith, along with Mr. Denny, our Executive Director of Business Affairs, will have the floor.
Mr. Denny, are you, are you there?
Yeah, yes, sir, Mr. Smith. Thank you. And good evening, Board. Good evening, everyone that's tuning in. I appreciate the opportunity to update the board and anyone that might be watching on Waycross. Our buildings continue to move forward. Our district continues to advance the construction of these two new projects. One's K-6 and the other the 712. And they are both proceeding on schedule, which is great, and also on budget, which is just as good. So, we're happy to be able to report that. We continue to monitor progress very closely, especially in light of all the circumstances in which we now find ourselves. But happy to report that the delivery date is still February 2nd, excuse me, February 4th, 2021. You can visibly see progress, just even from the street, when you drive by. If you happen to see anything that looks like bright blue paint on the outside of the building, that's actually the air barrier. It's visible from Kemper Road right now, where the high school arena is located. That's the air barrier between the brick and the CMU block walls, the concrete masonry units. So, that's what helps keep the building insulated and dry. There's continuing duct work. They're getting close to temporary HVAC at both buildings, which will accelerate construction, actually. It helps adhesives dry, pulls humidity from the air, and also pulls humidity from the concrete slab, which is essential to successful flooring installation later. So, there's a lot going on, lots of painting, lots of casework going in. The backup generators are now installed and being ready to soon be connected to the switchgear in the buildings. We've got walk-in freezers and coolers at the K-6, so lots going on. And we're just pleased that these projects continue to move ahead. Shout-out to the construction tradespeople who are in every day. They're essential workers, and they're in every day making it happen. So, very similar to our own essential workers, shout-out to them as well. We appreciate all of them, and again, thanks for the opportunity to give an update.
Thank you, Mr. Dean Denny. Again, this is informational. Board, do you have any questions for Mr. Denny or Mr. Smith this time? Only question I had. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Katrina.
No, I was just gonna say, I don't have any questions, but I rode by the K-through-six building the other day, and I was very impressed with the progress. And, you know, typically, I get to see the high school because I go past, but I actually made it a point to go back to see. You know, it's just when you look at it, you're like, wow, how did we make it? You know, through the other buildings and things like that. So, it's good that we got, you know, moved things forward at the timing that we did, because undoubtedly, with the COVID-19 pandemic and the cuts, we would not have, the state would not have been able to offer that level of support to communities to build new schools. So, it's very impressive.
And I've got-
Go ahead, Mr. McGowan.
Sorry about that. Yes, not maybe half a question and half a statement. Thank you so much, Mr. Denny, for all the progress, all the work. I know it's got to be hectic with everything going on right now, and I know we were not able to tour the sites because of the pandemic, and just anxious to get a chance to see it. I guess, once everything slows down, we'll get back on the schedule. Just looking forward to that.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Anyone else? Those are two excellent points. I don't think we would have been able to get the level of state funding that we got from the Ohio school facilities in this situation that we're in now. And I was looking, we were all looking forward to the tour on March the 18th that had to be canceled. So, we're looking forward to when we can get the tour, and maybe the buildings will be even more, you know, put together by the time we do get in there to do a tour. So, we're all looking forward to that. Thank you again, Mr. Denny. This is exciting news moving forward. The buildings are making great progress, and even amongst all the other issues that we're having at this time, it's just good to see that that is going as well as it's going. The next item on the agenda is 9.01, which is the Superintendent's Recommendation for the Personnel Schedules. Mr. Smith, you have the floor. Is he muted?
He's muted.
I can't, I can't see his screen. That's why I kind of thought it might be.
Right. There. You got me?
Yes, you are. There you go.
Yeah, the first one is Schedule A, Resignations. Second one is Schedule C, Personal Employment Support Staff. And finally, we have Schedule D, which is Personal Employment Certificated and Uncertificated, including extra duties. The recommendation is to approve the personnel schedules as presented. I make a motion to approve the personnel's schedules as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is, still under the Superintendent's Recommendations, is the reduction of 6% for all contracted employees. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Madam President, it really should be- Yeah, there should be a need for executive session at this point before you guys review this.
Okay, so can we move this to after our executive session and go on to the rest of our business? Or you want to do it now?
It's your, it's your, it's your order in the board's meeting, Madam President.
Okay, Board, what's your pleasure? Do you want to go into executive session now, or do you want to finish the rest of our board business and go into executive session at the end of our meeting, which is customary?
I prefer the latter.
I think the question is, are we gonna have to vote on something after the executive session?
I believe so.
If we're gonna have to vote on something, I think we should probably do it now as opposed to waiting until the very end.
Okay, anyone else having, yeah, okay, that's fine. Anyone else have a thought about it? One says for the end, one says right now.
I'm okay with right now.
I'm okay with right now, also.
Okay, well, Board, I'll entertain a motion at this time to go into executive session.
I make a motion to go into executive session for negotiations and employee compensation.
I'll second it.
I'm catching up here. Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. The Board will move into executive session. It is now 6:55. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote now that we are out of executive sessions?
I'll call the roll for you. Mr. Birdy?
Yes. Oh, yes, please, I'm sorry.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Yes, present.
Mr. McGowan?
Present.
Mrs. Rugless?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Present. Okay, now we're back to 9.02, which is the reduction of 6% for all contracted employees. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
The, someone's double muted. Okay, the subject for this particular agenda is a reduction of 6% for all contracted employees. And the recommended, the recommended action, as permitted by Ohio Revised 3319.12 and 3319.082, to approve a contract salary reduction for all employees of 6% effective July 1st, 2020, for all hourly certificated and non-certificated employees covered under the WWTA and OC bargaining agreements. This shall also include the Superintendent, Treasurer, and all district administrative positions effective August 1st, 2020, and all exempt employees effective July 1st, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, I would like to entertain a motion at this time?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Superintendent's Recommendation as presented.
Second?
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we got two seconds there, but-
Yes, I second.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Not at this time, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.03, which is the second read of the new and revised policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President. If we're, this recommended action is to approve the second reads, new and revised policies as presented. Policy 5460.02, students at risk of not qualifying for high school diplomas. Policy 3120.05 is a revised policy. Professional staff employing in personnel in summer school and community education programs. Revised policy 3120.08, professional staff employing in personnel of co-curricular extracurricular activities. And revised policy 4120.08, classified staff employing in personnel for co-curricular extracurricular activities. And the final revised policy is 5460, students' graduation requirements. Board, please note, I know you've already reviewed the policy, but the only policy that is new is the 5460.02. And actually accompanies 5460.
Dr. Johnson, can we have that feedback? I can barely hear.
I was getting-
If Ms. Hobbs can mute that one that's still live. I think it's, it might be Ms. Shonda.
Oh, her phone looks like it's muted on my screen.
Oh, yeah, you're right. The only two that I have open are Mr. McGowan, Anthony Smith, Dr. Johnson, and you.
Okay, it was Mr. McGowan.
Okay. All right, okay, all right. Well, thank you, because I was hearing that feedback too, but I wasn't sure where it was coming from. Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Smith, for that, Board. I'd like to entertain a motion for the the second reads on those policies.
Madam President, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the second reads, the new and revised board policies as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy? Dr. Culetti?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. McGowan's? Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless, thank you. Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. We're, I'm on a delay. I don't know if anybody else is on a delay too. I'm on a delay.
I am.
All right, thank you so, yeah, that's okay. Thank you so much, Superintendent Smith, for your recommendations. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh one, which is the board reports for the legislative report. And, board, I have forwarded you the updates as I have been receiving them through my email. May, you may have already read them. If not, they will be, they are sitting in your email and I, for you to read at your leisure. So moving on to the next item on the agenda, ten point oh two, the Great Oaks Career Technical Center Report. Mr. Birdy, do you have anything that you would like to share?
Just real quickly, obviously, they're doing virtual graduations as well. The Laurel Oaks graduation is actually being televised tonight at six thirty. Diamond Oaks is tonight at eight o'clock. Scarlet Oaks will be tomorrow at seven, and Live Oaks will be Thursday at seven. We had our meeting last Wednesday evening, and, you know, we're doing the same thing that we're doing here. It's all done remotely. So there's no student spotlight reports or anything like that going on right now. So that is the end of my report. I do have one, okay, go ahead. That's my end of my Scarlet Oaks report, or Great Oaks report.
Okay, was there a question that I hear? I can't see anybody, so is there a question that someone had? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Birdy. Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Smith.
Hey, Mr. Birdy, knowing that some of these kids are in the trades and they have already met with their possible employers, with some of the cutbacks and some of the layoffs, how is this affecting the morale of the kids who have worked, you know, really hard to learn a trade, I mean, earn a trade and earn that certification? What's happening on the campus and, you know, what's the attitude of the student at this point?
And actually, Mr. Smith, at the last meeting on Wednesday night, we really didn't talk a ton about that. I mean, they do have, still have some programs. I believe, you know, fire and police programs are still operational. And then they're doing everything that, that you're having to do remotely as well. So they're just trying to keep the kids engaged in that way in any way that they can.
Yeah, I know that some of the kids had already earned their certification and they were ready to go. Employers had already interviewed them, ready to have them connected. And if there's gonna be a reduction of services for the current employees, that would just be hard on the, on the new graduates coming out, trying to take charge of their next chapter.
Yeah, I think it is. I think it's gonna impact a lot of students and their ability to start new jobs right after they get done.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Birdy. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh one, which is board motions and recommendations. And at this point, I'm not aware of any board motions or recommendations that need to be discussed at this time. Board, does anyone have anything that they need to discuss at this time? Motions or recommendations?
Just a recommendation I have that I think everybody was muted. I'm still hearing background except Miss Rugless, so if she could mute her, that would be great.
Okay.
It's not I, but okay.
I live in a house with one other person and we're in two different rooms, so I don't know. Okay, well, that, having said that, let's move on to twelve point oh one, which is members of the Board of Education and superintendent comments. The first one up for comments is Dr. Culetti.
I have no comments. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Birdy, do you have any comments?
Just one, one statement. I know that Mr. Jones was on the, one of the personnel schedules is, is moving on to another job. And I just wanted to say a real quick story. My wife was working with my grandson over the weekend on some schoolwork. And one of the questions they asked him was what was his favorite thing about school? And his response, without any prompting, was having pizza with Mr. Jones.
No.
So I thought that was interesting.
Yeah.
That's all I've.
So he was, all right, thank you, Mr. Birdy. Mrs. Rugless?
Um, no, a quick little comment. I know that we had our work session, and I just wanna say that, you know, shout out to the high school and the administrators who are working to prepare to give our students a great graduation ceremony despite the, the times that we're in right now. I know that it's very hard for our seniors and our senior parents wanting to see their students walk across that stage. But I think the time and the effort that the staff has put, the thought in trying to make this a very memorable occasion should be applauded. And I'm very proud, looking at some of the graduations that are happening and thinking about how the staff have taken care to make this special for our students and our family, I'm very proud of them. So kudos to the high school staff and administration and Mr. Smith and your team, however, whoever played a part in making sure that students are celebrated appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rugless. Mr. McGowan's? Any comments or observations?
Just to kind of piggyback on what Mrs. Rugless said, you know, I know from our work session, we talked about what's gonna go into the virtual graduation. And so, you know, appreciative and happy and proud of all the work that was put in, look forward to seeing it. And I know this has been a difficult year for the graduates of 2020. So anything we can do to kind of give them some kudos is, we should be doing, so thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan's. Mr. Seymour, do you have any comments? Are you guys muted over there, Mr. Seymour and Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Do you have any comments, Mr. Seymour?
No, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam President and Board, and to everyone that's watching on Waycross. I know that the students had a lot of anxiety about what their graduation ceremony was gonna look like. And I think the, the high school team, along with Mrs. Denny and Mrs. Jackson, prepared an incredible experience for them that they could use as a keepsake for many, many years to come. But I think the part that I'd like to really express to the public was the teachers and the administrators were just as emotionally distraught about not having the ceremonial graduation. So it wasn't just the kids, it wasn't just the families, it's the teachers and staff too. And knowing that we ended the year so abruptly, it just made it hard. So one of the things that we are working on with the tech department, we're going to let the seniors hold on to their Chromebooks temporarily so we can actually stay in touch with them and find out how the next chapter is, is evolving. You guys heard me mention the question to Mr. Birdy about the kids in Scarlet with some of the trades and some of their opportunities. Well, our kids are still having the same exposure and hopefully the Chromebooks will help us stay in touch with them and hear about some of their involvements with colleges, of the military, as well as the world of work. So kudos to the students of the class of 2020. We love you, we'll miss you. And your virtual graduation is going to be absolutely awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Having said that, about the virtual graduation, just a reminder of the date for the virtual graduation, it is on the Winton Woods website. It is going to be Saturday, May the thirtieth, at four PM on Star sixty-four or the CW. You can find out information, more information about that on our Winton Woods website, www.wintonwoods.org backslash graduation. And it will take you to that. Another point that I'd like to make to the board, Mr. Martin had sent a link, I believe, to Mrs. Jordan that was then forwarded to us. If you want to make a flip grid, it has to be one minute less or less. You don't have to use the whole minute, which is a short message to the graduates. It is due by Tuesday, May the nineteenth. So you have tonight to work on it. Tomorrow morning, it needs to be in their hands because they need to edit it and get it all together to get it to the station. Also, I would like to thank the volunteer. Excuse me, they've already submitted it?
No, no, I'm just happy you mentioned one minute because some members go a little longer.
Yes, we, we tend to get wordy. Thank you. One minute or less, but you don't have to use the whole minute. The other thing I'd like to thank the volunteers who made the ribbons that lined the fence on Winton Road. It's just, it's just nice to see that we still are trying to maintain some of those traditions. And it, the class looks humongous as those ribbons go from one end of the fence down to the other. And also the announcement that the graduates of 2020 from Winton Woods have been offered nine million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in scholarship money. That's something to be very proud of for our graduates. We didn't get to have the usual ceremony where we celebrate them and they get to walk across the stage and receive their rewards. So we just want them to know that this board and this administration, superintendent and treasurer, appreciates the hard work that they do because when they leave and they look good, we look good. So just to say, congratulations to those graduates who are receiving some of those scholarship dollars. And again, thank you to the ladies in the committee who put together and put that whole display on for the ribbons for the, on the fence for the graduates. So that's all I have. Yes.
I, I was just saying, I believe that was an increase over, it was an increase from last year. So the scholarships increased as well as I did see some news coverage for Winton Woods and the ribbons. So kudos to the community engagement team for getting some coverage of that. We're, we're trying to keep some normalcy there for our students in our tradition.
Very good. That's very good. Also, just to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Birdy said about Mr. Jones. He, he, he's a product of the district. He graduated from Winton Woods. He came back and worked at Winton Woods as his student teaching. He's been here a long time. My husband and Mr. Jones coached together. We got to know him pretty well, and he will be missed, but we wish him all the best as he moves on in his career. So I, I believe, Mr. Birdy, that your grandchild would have no hesitance in saying, you know, his name as, you know, the person that he enjoyed most or whatever, because he's, he was excellent person to know and to work with as we have worked with him before on community efforts in the past, my husband and I. And so he will be missed, but we wish him all the best as he moves on. So having said that, I will move on to thirteen point oh one, which is where we would have went into executive session. But since we've already went into executive session, we don't have a need to go back into an executive session. So I would like to sincerely thank the Waycross communities for their service in videotaping tonight's regular board meeting under these unusual circumstances. And we appreciate your patience as we work through some of the kinks that we have to go through with technology, getting on and off and moving from room to room. With that said, I'd like to call the meeting of the Winton Woods City School Board of Education regular meeting, Monday, May the eighteenth, 2020, adjourned. Thank you. Take care of yourself and your loved ones. Stay safe, healthy, and well. Have a good evening.